Appeal in the matter of coming in and watching our participants.
Yes, Mr Valentine. Before you start, we need to deal with the question of identification of the individual referred to in the papers as TH. As to that, the view we take, having read the helpful submissions from the parties, is that while there is no basis for the Court making an anonymity order, equally, we don't see that there is any need for TH to be identified, and we would therefore request that the advocates continue to use the initials to refer to him.
My lord, well that certainly makes it simpler for me to consistently be referring to him as TH. My lord, you've got my skeleton argument, and you have got my supplemental skeleton argument.
We have indeed, and we have read them. Thank you.
There's not probably a lot I need to say, and I'll obviously be guided by the Court as to what you would like to hear from, hear from me about. That I would make, I suppose, traditional, my strongest point first, which is in relation to risk assessments. And all risk assessments require there be an identification of the risk, an assessment of the risk, its likelihood and severity are the two customary elements. Then there has to be a risk reduction and control measures applied to that risk. And there is an additional element in a case such as this. Because it involves human agency, it involves the child TH, and that implies aspects to deal with the management of his behaviour. Now, those are customary elements of any risk assessment, but I draw those, in particular in this case, specifically from the defendant's respondents' violence, sorry, their own risk assessment, which appears on page 325, my lord, of the supplemental bundle. So the Court will see there precisely the broad outline of the heading that I just provided, namely, it's misspelt, identification, identification of risk. Describe the foreseeable risk. Is the risk potential or actual? List who is affected by the risk. So that's the identification. Then we've got the assessment. Yes, I'm sorry, I'm struggling a little bit with the way it's printed, but yes, do carry on, yes. It is difficult to see, my lord. Then we have assessment of risk. In which situations does the risk usually occur? How likely is it that the risk will arise? If the risk arises, who is likely to be injured or hurt? What kind of injuries or harm are likely to occur? How serious are the adverse outcomes? So having identified and assessed the risk, we then move on to risk reduction options on the next page. Measures are in the first column, possible option, benefits, drawbacks. Proactive interventions to prevent risk, early interventions to manage risk, reactive interventions to respond to adverse outcomes. So so far, this is entirely normal risk assessment, and very wise and very sensible. There then is the additional element, which in my submission arises out of the fact that we are talking about children, and that is agreed behaviour management plan and school risk management strategy. And the behaviour management plan, of course, is specifically focused on the child. Then again, the first column, focus of measures. Proactive interventions to prevent risks, early interventions to manage risks, reactive interventions to respond to adverse outcomes. And then it says at the bottom, behaviour support plan to be completed by SMT, senior management team. That would suggest, rather strongly, that the risk assessment should link in with the wider scheme of behaviour management within the school. This risk assessment, of course, is specifically focused on violence and aggression. And all of this is what the school considered suitable and sufficient, and I would respectfully agree with them, because it takes the same pattern, the risk assessment, as one sees in any workplace or any assessment of risk. Now, the requirement for that risk assessment comes out of the violence and aggression policy, which appears, my lord, on page 337 of the supplemental bundle.
337.
337, my lord.
Thank you.
It's dated, this one, August 18, but it was agreed that, and the witnesses gave evidence, that a like copy, a like version, was in force at the time of this incident. And it's noted, statement of intent, the governors of the Federation of Brownhill School and the pupil referral service recognise their health and safety responsibilities and will take all reasonably practicable steps to safeguard members of staff, pupils and visitors to the premises. And the second paragraph down. In dealing with violence and aggressive behaviour, the governors will, to the best of their ability, ensure that the following systems are in place, understood and acted upon in an attempt to deal with a problem which is giving increasing cause for concern. In summary, the school will address the following issues. Code of practice will be brought to the attention of school wherever practicable the measures outlined in the policy policy will be observed and implemented. Staff who have been subjected to assaults in the form of physical or verbal abuse will be fully supported. Or all incidents reported will be fully investigated. Police will be contacted. Staff will be encouraged with the agreement of the member of staff. Staff will be encouraged to involve the representative trade unions. Legal advice will be made available. And nine, senior members of school staff will ensure that all assaults on members of staff are investigated and reported to the Health and Safety Support Service. And then, under the heading, risk assessment on violence and aggressive behaviour. As part of the strategy to combat incidents of violence and aggressive behaviour, head teachers will arrange for the following action to be undertaken. Give due regard to child protection, bring this document to the attention of all staff. Consider the arrangements already in place. Complete the risk assessment using the pro forma enclosed, which the Court below proceeded on the basis that that was the document that I first referred this Court to. And then, under reporting and recording of incidents, the governors will ensure that all incidents of violence and aggressive behaviour are reported to Kent Connolly in accordance with the council's code of practice investigated by Stella Oldham. The relevant assault and accident report forms are completed and sent to the Director of Education. Any preventative measures arising from the incident have been considered by the governors and implemented where practicable. And then, under the heading, monitoring the effectiveness of measures. It is important that all incidents are reported and investigated in accordance with this policy. Head teachers should consider the reports and the circumstances surrounding the incident and look out for trends in terms of the personnel involved, particular rooms or areas of the school, pupils involved, etc. Now, there is reference there to the incident report. That appears on page, the pro forma, my lord, appears on page 321 of the supplemental bundle. It has sections for the description of events leading up to the incident, the behaviour, the consequence, strategies used, positive handling strategies used. It's got a body map. Importantly, at section five, it has what's called life-space interview. And then the entries under that clearly imply that it is directed at the pupil. Why I need to be held, what could I do to avoid the situation next time? What were the consequences of my behaviour? Were they fair? Yes, no. Pupil's signature, and then a staff signature, brief reason why. And then on the next page, there's a further sheet, Court staff and its noted staff discussion and reflection. And then the final, final important document that I would wish to draw the Court's attention to is that on page 327. And this is the behaviour support plan, which was specifically referred to at the bottom of the risk assessment. And it's noted, behaviours targeted, actions to be taken, plan start date and review date completed by student signature. So again, it's signed by the child. So I set out all of those documents before the Court, because that is the framework for managing risk. But my learned friend criticises the appeal process on the basis that it is island hopping, with a greater sort of respect.
Sorry, is it?
That's island hopping, that a Court should be cautious about island hopping when reviewing a case heard by a first instance judge. With the greatest respect to the first instance judge, they never even visited the mainland. This, none of these documents, save the behaviour support plan, which the judge said, on balance, he considered was prepared, but he could make no findings as to its contents, were completed. There was no incident report after the 22nd of September incident. There was no incident report after the 5th of October incident. There was no risk assessment in relation to this child. None of this happened. Mrs Connolly thought there was probably a behaviour support plan. That's the head. Mrs Navratnam, the deputy head, said, yes, there is. No, there isn't. I agree with Mrs Connolly. I don't know. The only person who seemed confident that there was a behaviour support plan was Laura Coe. And the judge accepted her evidence that there was probably a behaviour support plan, but he also found that he could not be confident of its contents, nor that it had been updated. In that context, what the claimant says is that the judge misdirected himself by finding that the dynamic risk assessment that he found existed could, in the circumstances, be suitable and sufficient. If I could refer the Court to page 32 of the supplemental bundle. This is the witness statement of Valerie Beddington. And she is one of the two out of seven witnesses who referred to dynamic risk assessment. And at paragraph six on page 32, she says, I confirm that all relevant staff, including TAs, teaching assistants at the school, carry out continual dynamic risk assessments of all the children, both when they enter school and during the course of the day. Just pausing there, all children. What should have been triggered after the incident on the 22nd of September, when the claimant was assaulted by TH for the first occasion, was a risk assessment focused on violence and aggressive behaviour pursuant to their violence and aggression policy. So what she is describing cannot be a risk assessment focused on violence and aggression, because she says it is for all children. She then says, the risk assessment would involve both the teacher and training assistant, observing, teaching assistant, and observing and assessing the children when they come into class during the lessons and throughout the course of the day. Part of the dynamic risk assessment would be to observe a child's body language, which was usually indicative of their mood. By way of example, a child could appear relaxed or alternatively agitated, with the latter generally being suggested of the child having an issue on their mind, which may present itself during the course of the school day. Now, that is all sensible stuff. But is it the same as a risk assessment is normally understood? Identification of the risk, assessment of the risk, likelihood of severity, risk reduction, control measures, and then involving, in the case of a child, the child in relation to the management of his behaviour over a period of time? And the claimant says, no, it does not involve all of that. Mrs Connolly, the head, also makes reference to the dynamic risk assessment. And that is at page 39. Paragraph five. I confirm that TH was provided with a statement of special educational needs on the 11th of December 2007 for significant attention and concentration difficulties, as well as impulsive and often challenging behaviour. TH became pupil at Brownhill School from June 2012. I confirm that TH, like every other pupil at the school, was continually monitored and dynamically risk assessed, so as to ensure his needs are constantly under review and any additional support provided by qualified and experienced work colleagues. So again, there is reference there to the dynamic risk assessment being something that is undertaken on all pupils all the time. It cannot, by definition, be a risk assessment focused on aggression and violence. And again, what it refers to there, so as to ensure his needs were constantly under review and any additional support provided by qualified and experienced work colleagues. That is not a risk assessment as understood and as anticipated by the actual risk assessment on page 325, which deals with the identification of the risk, foreseeability, potential or actual, who is at risk, and so forth. Assessment of the risk, the risk reduction options, the agreed behaviour management plan, and again, reference to the behaviour support plan. In the judgment, the nature of the dynamic risk assessment is dealt with by his honourary judge as in two places. This is in the core bundle. At paragraph 13, page 38, it was conceded by Mrs Connolly that there was no specific written risk assessment in relation to TH. She, together with the other witnesses on behalf of the defendant, in fact, only one of them, suggested that there was a process of dynamic risk assessment, although there is no meaningful reference to that in any of the documentation disclosed. There's no reference at all to dynamic risk assessment in any of the documentation. That appears to have entailed staff using their experience and knowledge of the individual pupils and making their own assessments of their behaviours and acting accordingly. Information was relayed to colleagues and senior staff informally at regular meetings and after September 2015 through weekly bulletins and sometimes written in confidential notes, which were placed on the pupil's file. As I have said, TH's file is not available. And at paragraph 44, is on a judge's path, with further reference to the dynamic risk assessment. This is on page 44, para 44, page 44. The deterioration in TH's condition is not an issue. Notwithstanding that, the defendant failed to carry or record any formal risk assessment on TH, and without seeing the document, I cannot be satisfied that they had a properly updated behavioural support plan either. However, it seems clear that the senior staff at the school were aware of his deterioration generally and the events that managed festered itself. Otherwise, how did reference to the various incidents find their way into the TAC team around the child documents that I have seen? I accept that the staff at BLC carried out what has been described as dynamic risk assessments and that informal communication within the school was sufficient to bring issues concerning any individual pupil to the attention of other relevant staff. I'm not persuaded that if there had been any formal written risk assessment or proper written behavioural support plan, that it would have altered the defendant's approach to TH and his difficulties. Well, pausing there, I'm not sure on what basis the judge can say that, inferring that in fact there was nothing that could be done.
Can I just ask this question? You're quite right to point out all these failures, and in some respects, that appeared to be common ground, although I know that the defendant hasn't actually put his hands up to that. But the real focus of these type of cases is what would have been done that made a difference. And the burden of that is on the claimant. So you're quite right to say, well, you can't be sure that the judge shouldn't speculate like that, but really, the onus is on you to say what would have made the difference, what should have been there and should have been done. And the focus of the trial appears to have been on, shouldn't have been excluded, should have been excluded for longer, and then that changed. And the other one was, should have been managed differently on the day. Was there anything else at the trial which was suggested to, would have been picked up by a proper risk assessment, assuming for these purposes that there wasn't one?
Well, there were a number of things that I mentioned. One was the propensity for quiet anger, which appears in, I can find the page number for, my lord, if you would like it now.
I don't want to take you out of court, but just at some time, because you were making the point, you don't know how the judge could make that finding, that it's not really for him to do other than reflect on the evidence before him.
Yes, it's, I will come back to that point more substantively, my lord. It's, the quiet anger is on page 373.
Of the core or the supplemental?
Of the supplemental.
Thank you. 373.
373. Observe behaviours have been random and impulsive acts, for example, letting off a fire extinguisher and kicking over water jugs of dining room tables. He is very quick to become upset and displays quiet anger. And then, under home section, it says, it mentions hugely aggressive outbursts in recent months. So I addressed the judge specifically at trial, stating that those were the sort of things that would find themselves in a risk assessment, and they are things that should have been addressed in terms of preventative measures to recognise that even if he was being quiet, then there might very well be an outburst on the way. One of the other matters that I addressed the Court specifically on was the failure to have a restoration meeting. And this whole issue about the restoration meeting was also important, because I relied on it to demonstrate that the communication that the judge said was effective within the school was not that effective. Because all of the witnesses, except Laura Coe, thought that the documented restoration meeting was in relation to the claimant. Whereas undertaking an investigation, really, of the disclosure and then putting it in cross-examination, there was no restoration meeting with the claimant after the 22nd of September. Now, that again is a causative element in my submission, and I will come back to that.
Can you, I picked that up, I also picked up the other bit in your skeleton, which was no return interview.
No.
Was that, because I've obviously read what Mr Lakesley says in relation to that, was that a pleaded causative aspect at the trial? Because I've not been able to find it in the skeleton, in the particulars of claim.
No, well, if I can give some history, my lord, to that. Disclosure, as is flagged up.
Yeah.
In the particulars of claim, in fact.
This is page 62 or something.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt and.
No, no. Yes, page 69. It's asserted there, the defendants have failed to provide proper disclosure right at the bottom of, or top, the bottom of page 68, then going on to 69.
Yeah, thank you.
In particular, they failed to provide documentation dealing with previous incidents involving TH, in particular, the incident when he jumped on the claimant's back and punched him, because of course, we had nothing, because there was nothing eventually, but we were asking for it.
Sorry, there was.
There was no incident report for, for the September, the 22nd incident.
No.
Nothing at all. So it was basically the claimant saying, he jumped on my back and he was excluded for three and a half days.
And you perfectly properly say, paragraph five, well, if we have to amend when we get proper disclosure, then we'll seek course. I'm not sure that's being a pleading, but I well understand why you flag it. But that does then leave you with the position that you knew there had been the attack on 22nd of September, and you knew what their policy was, which included a restorative justice meeting. And you didn't plead that that was the critical failure?
No, we didn't plead it was the critical failure. I mean, there.
Or a causative failure.
Well, there are a number of issues there, my lord. Firstly, I always quote Lord Wolfe in McPhillyamy versus The Times, who makes observations to the effect that after disclosure in the exchange of witness statements, pleadings have a largely historical interest, or words to that effect. So I wouldn't generally, in a case of this sort, it might be different in clinical negligence,
Yeah.
where expert evidence is pivotal, as both to breach and causation, apply for permission to amend a particulars of claim. I wouldn't generally in this case, because it's a matter for the Court at the end of the day, causation and breach, because this is a health and safety case, not a clinical negligence case. But dealing with a specifically incident about restorative justice, it appears from what Mr Cox says, that even when he prepared his report, he didn't have an in-date behavioural policy. He says his is dated, this is in the.
Well, just before you go on, just can I be clear as to the structure of the particulars of claim? So in paragraph three at page 65, it's pleaded, the incident was caused by the negligence and or breach of statutory duty to the defendants. And there are then particulars given. And as I understand it, what you're particularly focusing on at the moment is particular 18, failing to undertake any or any adequate risk assessments. And then you talk about the five steps to a risk assessment you've been addressing on this, and you say defendants failed to implement these steps adequately at all, and so on. And then there's reference to the regulations. So we have a clear plea of. So we have a clear plea of failure to undertake any or any adequate risk assessment.
We also, sorry to interrupt, but we also have paragraph eleven, failing adequately to respond to and or manage TH's increasingly aggressive behaviour, failure to manage that behaviour, which would be part of the risk assessment as well.
My lady, yes.
Now, unless it's escaped my attention, and I'm not intending any criticism when I say this, I just want to be clear what the position is, there's no plea of causation as such, is that correct?
That's correct, my lord. I mean, all I can say is at that stage, it did not appear to me that a specific pleading of causation was necessary. One of the reasons for that, I think, was at that stage, one of the things that was being alleged was that the boy should have been removed from the school. Now, that case was never advanced at trial because Miss Vidler said he shouldn't have been removed from the school. So on that basis, before the incident, so on that basis, the claim had shifted in that sense by the time it came to court. But it's right that there was no specific pleading of causation, my lord, yes. But again, in my submission...
Yeah, and just so as I'm clear, and again, I'm not trying to criticise, I just want to understand how the case was put. So in the particulars of claim, we don't see any plea of, well, the defendants should have done X, they should have done Y, they should have done Z.
No, but it was very difficult at that stage because we didn't have a lot of disclosure. We didn't even know about the fifth of October incident. In relation to the restorative justice, the claimant had always said, I think the defendants had specifically said, there was a meeting with the claimant after the twenty-second of September incident, I think that's in their defence, the claimant's always said it had never happened.
Yeah, all right, I'm grateful for the explanation, but just following up the theme of my questions, can I ask you this? Was there ever a part eighteen request asking you to particularise your case on causation?
No.
Thank you.
The case in causation was very clearly set out in the claimant's skeleton argument at trial, at which the case of Vale was cited.
Could you show us that?
I beg your pardon?
Could you show us that?
The claimant's skeleton argument starts at page eighty-one of the final call bundle and the issue of causation.
Page ninety-seven, the following?
Yeah, sorry, I think you've got that bigger than me, my lord. My lord, yes, paragraph thirty-nine. My lord, I always perceived this case as the key issue as being that of causation. It was the claimant's belief that in light of the multiple failures, to comply with the entirety of the mechanisms that they considered suitable and sufficient for a risk assessment, the failure of restorative justice, failure to complete accident report forms, that breach was going to be a relatively easy hurdle. I was wrong about that, of course, but that was, but it was always the claimant's impression that in fact this was a causation case. And of course, it was only at trial that it was categorical that there was no restoration meeting with the claimant after the twenty-second of September, because the witnesses conceded that it was in relation to Christian Liptrot. The Christian Liptrot incident only became apparent after disclosure we received in March 2020. Before that date, we had no idea about it. It's not mentioned in six of the seven witness statements.
And yet your client was teaching at the school when that incident occurred, wasn't he?
He was, my lady.
So if the dynamic risk assessment process had been working in the way that the judge said it was working, with there being a very close community, and given that your client was the, one of the deputy heads, one might have expected him to have known of the fact that TH had thrown a mug at another teacher.
My lady, yes. He would have known, presumably, even though he was in the upper school, if there had been a behavioural support plan and there had been a risk assessment and all the rest of it. That's not the only failure, apparent failure of communication within the school. It doesn't appear, it appeared that most of the witnesses, most of the witnesses didn't know about the Christian Liptrot incident. Now, that's an interpretation, that's the only interpretation I can put on it, because none of them mentioned it. Although when I put it to Mrs Prince Navratnam, that the, contrary to her statement, that the restoration meeting was in relation to Christian Liptrot, not the claimant, she embarked on what the judge described as essentially a gratuitous attack on the claimant and that it would have been for him to arrange it and this and that, which the judge quite rightly rejected because it was grossly unfair. But she undertook a one-eighty degree turn, having previously said that it was in relation to the claimant, she said it would know it was in relation to Christian Liptrot. And so it was a rather peculiar sort of set of evidence. Other matters which, in my respectful submission, to refer to my lord's question previously, which could have been...
Sorry, just to pursue the question I was asking you earlier. So you've helpfully referred us to paragraph thirty-nine and the following, and I see in paragraph forty, you refer in, to the first sentence, to the opinion of Miss Vidler that TH should have been moved to a more therapeutic educational environment prior to this incident. Now, that case was ultimately not pursued and therefore we don't need to consider that. But I'm more interested in the second sentence, where you refer to what she says in seven point, three point ten. Defender did not put in place actions that could have effectively helped TH to manage his increasingly challenging behaviour and mental health disability. And references made to the fact that were no call for points with CAMHS, no consideration to using pupil premium funds. Was the, the question of the actions that could have more effectively helped TH fleshed out elsewhere?
My lord, yes, because it is specifically set out in my skeleton argument. I'll take my lord to this. Paragraph thirty, page ninety-one. It starts, significant body of guidance. Oh, I do beg your pardon, that's more about the inferences to be drawn from a failure to comply with it, it's a little bit on before that. Yes, it starts at paragraph seven on page eighty-five, my lord. This is a section dealing with the statutory and regulatory framework. I start off with management of health and safety at work, then the corporate safety risk assessment, which is in rather generic terms. And then obviously I cite regulation three-three in terms of updating risk assessments and regulation ten. Every employer shall provide his employees with comprehensible and relevant information to the risks to their health and safety, preventative and protective measures. Which is relevant, of course, because it's something that could have been done in relation to TH, if there had been a proper behaviour policy.
Yes, but I think the point that the court is interested in is you make the point, there was no proper risk assessment here. And speaking for myself at the moment, subject to what Mr Blakesley has to say, I see the force of that. But then that then takes us on to the next stage of the inquiry is, okay, if we are, if we are with you that there was no proper risk assessment, what would have been different if there had been a proper risk assessment?
Yes, well, I'm, this, I am taking you, my lord, to that, the mental health behaviour and policy in schools, which is at paragraph fourteen of the skeleton argument before the judge. Support pupils whose mental health problems manifest themselves in their behaviour outlines how schools can identify whether a child or young person's behaviour, disruptive, withdrawn, anxious, depressed or otherwise, may be related to a mental health problem and how to support them, provides advice and guidance. There is then a sort of generic statement, paragraph fifteen, schools need to be alert to how mental health problems can underpin behaviour support. Earlier intervention to identify issues and provide effective support is crucial. And then in terms of actions, it's at paragraph seventeen, assessment, plan, action and regular reviews. None of that was done. Now, my lord, it is at a level, and I, and there will be some specific points I can make about what a risk assessment should have included, but it is a level there of, which is somewhat amorphous, I entirely recognise that. But this is what the school should have been done, to bring mental health into the centre of its approach to TH, which it didn't do. And mental health does not appear in the behaviour policy. There were various actions done, which the court spent a lot of time looking at, team around the child and CAF and all of this sort of thing, but they were sort of supporting the family in a normal way. There was a referral to counselling, which never took place. There was a mention of a referral to bereavement, it wasn't clear whether that took place. There was discussion of CAMHS, Child and Adolescent Mental Health Services, from April 2015, which still hadn't taken place by the time of this incident in November. And then he was shifted to a described as a more therapeutic environment, although one of the witnesses said it was exactly the same as the school he was in. But there was certainly no assessment of his mental health and that's what Miss Vidler was critical of.
We can understand that, but what at the moment you haven't really helped us so much with is what that would have shown and therefore what, how the attack would have been prevented.
Well, it meant, there is a mention of expressing his grief through anger, that is specifically mentioned as well. If I can find that reference.
Well, foreseeability of the attack is not the issue, it's how would it have stopped it?
Well, to some extent, it is obviously difficult and it's always going to be an inference that the court is going to have to make in, and obviously I've cited Vale and I've cited the case of Allison, is that the risk assessments are precisely intended to minimise the risk and they involve the pupil in that. And what the claimant says is, if the pupil's mental health needs are being better met, then he is less likely to exhibit his grief through anger. Now, there are other facets of the evidence, and this is a more concrete example, that on reading through the evidence were apparent. And one of them is Laura Cope, and this is at page one, five, two of the supplemental bundle. At B, what, what he was doing partly was trying to fit in with some of the more troublesome pupils that we had at the time. Now, that was Laura Cope's, said that in cross-examination. I had never seen, I'd only noticed it on reading through these transcripts. That was the first time the court, or in any of the material that that was mentioned, it wasn't in Laura Cope's statement, but it is precisely the sort of observation and insight that a risk assessment should be picking up. He's trying to fit in with some of the more troublesome pupils. So the question then is, well, how do you address that? Well, I cannot be sure of that, I'm not a teacher, but if there is a foreseeable risk, which it clearly was for the TH, because he's committed two assaults already, then it needs to be addressed.
Well, Miss Van Tijden, there isn't a standard of perfection expected of teachers that we don't impose on ourselves.
No.
And you've great experience in this area of law and there are ways in which certain things are obviously causative and certain things are obviously not. And I'm not sure it's an entirely adequate answer to say you're not a teacher.
Well, it's, it's the only answer I suppose I've got to some extent, because there were, there were so many issues. I mean, what I said in, in closing submissions was in terms of the locations of some of these incidents, because they seem to occur in the atrium, for example. Now, during my closing submissions, His Honour Judge Platts disputed in fact that it was the atrium, although the accident report for the incident did in fact say it was the atrium. So there is a certain location there. And then the other point that I did make causatively is about the whole issue of restorative justice, because, which is set out in the supplemental bundle.
While you're looking for that, it just occurred to me that it's a little difficult if there isn't a risk assessment to say how you can manage the risk, because if you don't know what the causes of the problem are, you don't know how those causes can be addressed. So for example, if the assess, if the risk assessment had said that TH is associating with a peer group who were a bad influence on him, the answer may be to dissuade him from such association or, or keep him apart or encourage him to make friends with other people.
My lady, yes.
If the root cause of the problem or part of the root cause of the problem is an anger management issue, then some form of counselling might be the problem. Likewise, if it's partly the grief of losing a parent and a coping mechanism with that might be bereavement counselling. But it's a bit difficult to say that you should anticipate how the school should have behaved in terms of managing the risk that was posed by TH if they hadn't identified what the root causes of the risk were.
Well, my lady, respectfully, I agree with that. We've got such a sort of lacuna, a dearth of information about what the trigger points for this young man were. One of the issues, and it is an issue about restorative justice, it's on page three, one, eight of the supplemental bundle. Restorative justice, restorative justice is an alternative approach to behaviour and relationship management in schools and is being gradually adopted by the BLC. Through the principles of restorative justice, offending pupils take responsibility for the impact of their behaviour on other people by providing a forum that allows a fair process of communication. This process can be through structured questions about the incident and the impact caused, leading on to an opportunity for... I'm not sure what that word is.
Sorry, can you just give me the page number again?
What, three, one, eight, my lord.
Thank you.
For...
Choices, I think it is.
Choices, my lord, thank you, yes, to be made to repair the harm and allow closure, providing resolution to conflict. Now, again, that was something that I specifically... Now, again, that was something that I specifically put in the absence of a restorative justice meeting to Mr Cox.
Where was that?
I'm just finding the reference, my lord.
Thank you.
Yes, it's at page two forty, my lord, of the supplemental bundle. At F, this is Mr Cox answering, I think that after that period when he next then came, should one try and have some kind of resolution meeting? Yes, of course, I think that is correct. And in that, I'm going to ask a tautological question, Mr Cox, which I know you understand, because you've just referred to reproach more. But in the absence, oh, forgive me, of a resolution meeting, there is not going to be a resolution, is there? No. No, and it is not wholly a coincidence that it was the claimant that TH attacked again. I am not quite certain what you're implying with that. Well, the incident of twenty second of September was when he punched and kicked and potentially jumped on his back, according to the claimant. That is irrelevant in some ways, punched and kicks, we do know, on the twenty second of September. His absence for a couple of weeks afterwards, there is no resolution meeting, and on the fifth of November he attacks the claimant. Third, third of November, thank you, Your Honour, he attacks the claimant again. That is self-evident, it was the incident in the dining hall when Mr, sorry, when the claimant was doing his best professionally to deal with a good problem and was then attacked, and yes, then there was this pretty dreadful second incident. And I mean, again, that feeds into the whole following through of the incident reports, part of which is the pupil's understanding of what has happened and the risk assessments and so forth. I think it is probably worth just having a quick look at the serious incident sheet. And then I take him through the incident report, which has obviously got a feedback section.
The third of November incident report, because there wasn't one on the twenty second?
No, well, as a pro forma.
Oh, right.
Pro forma, to demonstrate to him that it has that section on the child having an ability. And in fact, Mr Cox says on page two four two B, yes, I mean, the document is a good one, I think, I agree. And the question at F, page two four two, it does allow an opportunity for a child like TH, who we know, and the claimant himself acknowledged was capable of rational discussion on occasion, gives an opportunity for the pupil to reflect upon their behaviour. That is surely, that is surely a good thing, I agree with you totally, I agree with you, yes, I think it looks to both of us, Mr Cox, as a good document, but it's a purpose that's entirely avoided and obviated, or it is lost if it is not actually used. Mr Cox seemed curious, he had heard all of the evidence. Well, I do not know whether it was used in this particular case, it was not used. He says, we have not sighted it, have we, Miss Van Tijden? More than that, she said it wasn't used. Thank you. And then the bit I'm coming to, my lord, is on the next page, two four three.
And Cox was their expert, was it?
Cox was their education expert, my lord, yes. So that, he had terrible difficulties, this was a remote trial, my lord, as you may have observed, and he was in Lincoln. So that is not in dispute, it was not used, nor was it used for the fifth of October. And then I'm going through again, emphasizing to him the fact that these are good documents and they should be used. And then at B, well, obviously no, because there was no discussion with the claimant about this, all right, all of that should have been done and it will, it is a matter for the court essentially, whether that had some causative impact on the subsequent incident. Because TH did not attack any of the other teachers, did he? During the third of November, I certainly...
Sorry, which page you want now?
Two four three, my lord.
I have to see.
So again, I've gone back, come back to my point, which is that it wasn't a coincidence that it was TH again. And it's taken me longer because I've had to go through the documents. But then at C, I certainly have, and the answer is, I certainly have no evidence of that at all. It seems totally against the claimant. So Mr Cox, rather, as an experienced education consultant, recognised that there was something about the claimant of all the teachers, and because there were a lot of teachers milling about during the time of this incident. No restorative meeting with Mr, with the claimant. And then it was the claimant who's punched out of all of the other teachers.
Can I just ask this question, and no one took any objection at the trial, that this wasn't at least open to you to pursue that line?
My lord, no. I mean, I think I would set it out, I set everything out. As the court will see, everything that is in the replacement skeleton argument and the supplementary skeleton argument isn't so relevant, because it's about the procedural history. But all of this was in the original skeleton argument and in my submissions to His Honour Judge Platts. Some of this, obviously, was rather difficult to put in a skeleton argument, because the violence and aggression policy, we didn't have one which said it was enforced at the time. And in relation to the restorative meeting, they said the claimant had had one. And it was only at trial that I was able to demonstrate that it wasn't him, it was Christian Liptrot, which of course we have no documentation for. No witness statement, nothing, no incident report.
Do we have a note of the restorative justice meeting with CL? Sorry to ask all these questions.
With the...
With Mr Liptrot.
All there is is the TAC meeting, and I think it's at three eight three.
In the supplementary bundle?
In the supplementary bundle, my lord.
This is the team around the child meeting?
My lord, yes. Yes, here we are, it's on page three eight four, in fact. Lucy Young sent in the following update, unfortunately Wendy and I cannot attend the next TAC meeting due to other commitments, so I wanted to give you an update for the meeting. Mum didn't attend two meetings with Laura to discuss Travis's assault on a teacher. Laura met with Travis and the teacher involved, so Travis could apologise and this could be resolved. Now, all of the defendant's witnesses, six out of seven, said that was the claimant. Laura Coe said, no, that was Christian Liptrot. After we had disclosure in March twenty twenty, demonstrating that it wasn't the claimant. But all of their witnesses' statements still said he'd had a restorative justice meeting. And in cross-examination, they quickly accepted that it was in fact Christian Liptrot, which again goes to this issue of communication and all the rest of it. But that's all that we've got. There was a log from recollection which just said, meeting with Christian Liptrot, mug thrown. And then somewhere else it said, serious incident should be excluded, but hasn't been. Nothing more substantive than that, that was it. I just wanted to take the court to my closing submissions where I'm very alive of this issue of causation. Where I did make some submissions about this. Yes, my lord, page two nine six D of the supplemental bundle. I make the observation about the mental health and behaviour in schools. I think I've already addressed that, that's not the correct question, when there are steps to be taken that should be taken, that are aimed at correctly correcting precisely the sort of behaviour that we're talking about, they're not done, then the court is entitled to reach an inference. Take an inference, make an inference, it is clear breach to be completely unaware of this document and to act upon it, and the only issue then is the issue of causation. I gave a crude example probably in relation to the risk assessment based on the second page of the violence and aggression policy, monitoring the effectiveness of measures, and that states head teachers should consider the reports and circumstances surrounding the incident and look out for trends. The particular rooms or areas of the school, I referred to the atrium, now I may have got the atrium wrong, but the point is this, we do not know, because it was not done, what could have come out of the process. It could be said, for example, that TH should not be left with the claimant after the twenty second of September. It should say that, could say, well, there was no resolution after the twenty second of September, in the absence of a resolution, the claimant is at risk from TH. It might have actually led to a resolution taking place if a risk assessment had been done. Which I think is, my respectful submission, a very good point, because the behaviour policy is all about doing the resolution, if the risk assessment had actually been performed, then that resolution and restorative justice would have been undertaken. And that should have been triggered again after the fifth of October incident. If an incident form had been filled out, because again, there's matters in the incident form for the reflection of the pupil. It almost certainly would, because it requires the pupil's input, and obviously we cannot say for certain what would have happened. And the judge at that point, we do not know whether TH still harboured resentment against the claimant for having led to him being excaled for three and a half days, exactly that. Or the other way round, which is just as much of a failure, which is a fair point. We do not know whether the claimant harboured resentment against TH, which could have affected his behaviour.
Well, we would, because the claimant gave evidence.
Well, absolutely.
So I'm not sure that is a fair...
No, I know.
Get on with the...
No, quite right. Not the best point, I mean.
But you're saying this is all you identifying that there was no restorative justice meeting?
Yes.
And pointing out its causative effect?
Exactly, and not only with respect to the risk assessment, it's the whole package of supportive measures. It's the incident report as well. It's the behaviour support plan as well. These are all what, they're all directed at. And then I move on to the incident itself, which obviously is not an issue.
And the defendant's case, it looks from the judge's summary, was that it was a spontaneous act and not related back, as it were?
Well, it's not really clear, because he said it was a dynamic risk. The content of the dynamic risk assessment bears no relationship to the pro forma risk assessment, which is a good and proper document that had been provided. So it's not really clear what he said. What he does say is make some observations about foreseeability, which I've looked at those and I've struggled to understand really what is being... It could be that that is what the judge is reaching for, that it wasn't foreseeable on that morning, and no risk assessment would have helped that. But again, I mean, it was clearly there was an incident going on, which was quite prolonged.
What strikes me is the fact that you've got three other teachers out there trying to deal with this young man. And he doesn't strike any of them.
No.
And then a teacher comes along with him, he's had a run-in in the past, to put it neutrally. And he's the one who gets struck.
Yes.
And there hasn't been anything done in the intervening period to find out why the first incident occurred in the way in which it did, although there's some light shed on it in the passage you've just shown us, that the pupil thought that he was being picked on because he'd come to the aid of his cousin and and therefore he felt that this was unfair intervention by the teacher and he got excluded as a result of all of that. Who knows, the point you're making is, if they had been brought together face to face to explain what happened and had a discussion, it may be that what was simmering underneath wouldn't have continued to simmer underneath, who knows, he might have let up with it.
No, my lady, yes, and Mr Cox certainly seems attracted by that, and he actually says, it all seems directed against him. So there's certainly some indication of causative relevance at that point. And I believe my pickups are these. And I believe I pick up some of these. I think there are some other causative entries because that's, I've addressed the court primarily on grounds A and B, which is the suitability of the risk assessment. Grounds C and D are, and ground C, I'm sort of taking these in pairs, failure to take into consideration the failure of the defendant to comply with its own strategies. These are largely set out in the, in my replacement skeleton argument, page 120.
Well, the failure to have the restorative justice meeting is a C and D failure, isn't it?
My lord, it is.
It's not the suitable and sufficient risk assessment?
No, no, my lord, you're quite right, my lord. I have moved on in that sense. But one of the things that I felt that had gone with respect to the judge is slightly wrong, is that he conflated the duty to TH to the duty to the claimant. What he says at paragraph 39, page 43 of his judgment, under the heading Discussion. Before dealing with the allegations made by the claimant, I make some general observations. First, it is apparent that the defendant owed overlapping duties, the first being to TH as a pupil and its care, the second to the claimant as its employee. In the circumstances of this case, the duties overlap in the sense that if there was a breach of a duty of care to TH, which led to a foreseeable risk of injury to staff at BCL, then that would amount to a breach of duty of care to their employees in general and the claimant in particular. But it isn't only the duty to TH which is relevant. The school has a duty, a separate standalone duty to the claimant. And with respect to the judge, he misdirected himself as well at paragraph 44.
Sorry, why is 39 a misdirection? I mean, they are separate duties.
Yes.
But they're overlapping. I mean, whether one should put it in a judgment is a different point, but what's wrong?
Well, what I'm saying is that he didn't move beyond that to consider the standalone duty that the school owed the claimant. He entirely conflated the duty that the school owed to the claimant to the duty that the school owed to TH, which is potentially why he didn't go on and deal with sufficiently the suitability and the sufficiency of the risk assessment. That's apparent right from paragraph one, I believe, my lord, of the judgment. Paragraph two, on page 36. He sets out the case of the claimant. Study to three main strands to this argument. First, that because of a steady deterioration in TH's behaviour, he should have been removed from the school to more therapeutic setting before the 3rd of November. Well, that wasn't ever perceived at trial. Second, that the defendant failed in any event to respond adequately to the deterioration in TH's behaviour by providing adequate support or referring to outside agencies, including mental health services. The third one is just to do with the management of the incident, but his characterisation of the second point is almost word for word what Mr Vaughan said, not what I said. I always emphasised that the school had a duty under common law to risk assess properly and provide safety for the claimant. But this in a sense is the beginning with respect to the judge where it went wrong because he did not perceive that the school had a standalone and separate, obviously to some extent it does overlap, but it's a standalone duty to the claimant. And I can take you, my lord, precisely to where it is that Mr Vaughan says that, if it would assist.
Is paragraph 15 of his skeleton deals with the overlapping duties on page 111?
My lady, yes. I'll come back to that. It just did, Mr Vaughan it was, he's characterised it as Mr Vaughan, who said it at page 252 of the supplementary bundle. I say the second issue I would submit is whether BL's response to TH's deteriorating behaviour was sufficient. And by that I mean, was it sufficient to protect the claimant in relation to the incident on the 3rd of November? My lady, yes, yes, I've got there now. But it's, in my submission, there was insufficient emphasis from the get-go and the way he characterised the claimant's case was not the way it was presented. Yes, the other point about paragraph 44 that I wanted to pick up.
Forty-four of the judgment?
Of the judgment, my lord, yes.
Yep.
It's noted there, and this is in relation to causation, five lines from the bottom. It is not suggested that the claimant would have acted any differently had he been aware of any properly completed risk assessment or behavioural support plan. Now, on one level, that can be criticised, it's just on the basis that reduction of risk and control of risk requires measures taken long before the actual incident, certainly in a situation where there is a child involved with recognised behavioural problems and there are recognised systems for improving that behaviour.
So, was it suggested?
Well, that's what I'm taking, my lord, too, yes. Page 96 of the supplemental bundle.
Ninety-six?
296, my lord.
Yeah, thank you.
At D. I think I've already addressed that, that is not the correct question. When there are steps to be taken that should be taken that are aimed at correctly correcting precisely the sort of behaviour that we're talking about and they are not done, then the court is entitled to reach an inference. And then G, in fact, as well. That's the atrium. It could be said, for example, that TH should not be left with the claimant. It should say, well, there was no resolution. So, it is the same point. We have covered that, in fact, my lord. It's, it's not about just saying the claimant would have done something different. It's the broader context of what the trigger is. And it's part and parcel with respect to the judge of the failure to properly understand not only the risk assessment process, which is about risk reduction and control, not only the fact that the child becomes involved in that risk assessment process through reflection, but also the broader behavioural policy and means for improving behaviour within the school, which after all is what the school is all about, is precisely supposed to be improving the behaviour. Just in relation to the mental health.
So, just to articulate, I think, the point that you're making in my own words. It's not so much about how the claimant would have acted differently, it's about how TH would have acted differently.
My lord, yes, absolutely. And it's about the entire dynamic of a particular child within the school. But that's not implicit within the documents, it's explicit. That's what all of the documents are about. Because that's what the school is about. It's about addressing poor behaviour. So, it's throughout all of the documents. And there is a wholesale failure to complete any of them, except possibly the behavioural policy, which the judge didn't have a copy of, we don't know what its contents were. I think it's right if I say something a little bit about the experts, which is set out in my supplemental skeleton argument. You'll see there that there was, the claimant didn't feel that we ever needed expert evidence in this case. And we court ordered that expert evidence be obtained by the defendant's request. I had gone on to court with the section for a month and a half showing that experts weren't ordered in the vast majority of these cases, notwithstanding that experts were ordered. My lord, I think it's probably sensible to be frank, they didn't bring a lot to the party, neither of them. Ms Fiddler brought more to the party than Mr Cox, because at least she set out the proper, the correct, the contemporaneous statutory framework, regulatory and non-regulatory guidance. And she did at least condescend and look at the documentation. Mr Cox seemed totally oblivious of the failure to complete the documentation. Now, she was critical, and it is set out of their failure to modify the behaviour plan, and she notes the failure to risk assess. She notes the failure to risk assess at page 17.
This is supplementary bundle, is it?
My lord, yes.
Thank you.
At paragraph 15. 5115, at the bottom of the page. In so far as I can ascertain from the bundle, there is no evidence of any risk assessments to prevent TH from posing further risks in response to his increasingly challenging behaviour at school, at home and in society. She also notes on the next page, 5116, insofar as I can ascertain from the bundle, there is no evidence of any modification of TH's behavioural plan. Well, we never saw any behavioural plan. And then she makes further criticisms. Now, it's said by my learned friend in his skeleton argument that those matters were entirely absent from the agenda. Well, they were entirely absent from the agenda because my instruction solicitor accidentally sent the agenda that the defendant had prepared back to them, saying, we don't agree yours, but do you like this one? Well, it was the one that they'd sent us in the first place and they agreed to it. We made an application to have the additional questions put to the experts and His Honourable Judge Platts declined that application. So, we were left with an agenda that we had no part in drafting at all. There was obviously no criticism, my learned friend, about that because he was entirely unaware of that history.
But he makes a point that the judge made a case management decision and you didn't appeal it and there we are.
Well, it's a case management decision, he doesn't specifically say that, I think, to be fair to him, but from the claimant's perspective, it was not perceived that the expert evidence was pivotal. As I put in the supplemental skeleton argument, we didn't consider that we needed expert evidence to pursue this claim, because what we considered pivotal was the employer's duty to the employee, not primarily the employer's duty to TH. And what happened was that the case got taken over by this lengthy inquiry about CAF, team around the child and all of this, neglecting the really obvious points about the failure to risk assess, failure to prepare incident reports when teachers are getting punched and kicked and things thrown at them, failure to update behavioural policies. So, the whole case got sort of sidetracked about the school's duty to the child.
Well, to be fair to the local authority, you had pleaded that he should have been excluded and that would have required therefore an analysis of those duties. I mean, if you plead it, you can't really moan that they looked into it.
No, my lord, you're entirely right, that is right, and...
And that is one of the risks of actually not concentrating on the points all the way through.
Yes. But in relation to the scope of what the experts deal with, they are not health and safety experts. They are not an expert like in Kennedy against Cordia, where there was a dispute about the appropriateness of the expert in that case, Mr Greasley, I think his name is. This is the case with the overshoots and the visiting elderly vulnerable people in the community and slipping in ice. That was a health and safety expert and that expert specifically addressed what risk assessments should include and so forth. Ms Fiddler didn't do that and she criticised her doing that, but that isn't her remit, she is an education consultant. So, in some senses, it's, we, a case management, an error was made by my instruction solicitor. We picked that error up, we made an application. His Honourable Judge Platts said, no, no more expert evidence agendas, that's enough. But frankly, what would it, the real point I was answering there was my learned friend's point, saying that this was how the claimant put its case. That's what he's definitely wrong about. I could understand why he thinks that from the agenda because he doesn't know the history, but that isn't how the claimant framed the case. That was the mischief that I was responding to. But on one level, the claimant didn't really consider that it was that important because she's an education consultant. She can talk about the duty or the failure of the duty to deal with TH and the mental health was particularly useful and the fact that all of their documents were out of date. But what she doesn't refer to, except in passing, is the failure properly to risk assess and the causative input of that, nor were we expecting her to. So, this is not a Kennedy and Cordia case where the expert in that case comments, because he's a health and safety expert with a particular interest in slipping, he comments upon the contents of the risk assessment and the causative potency of that. This is a very different sort of case because the duty owed by the employer to the employee is covered by the normal risk assessments. It's not about the duty to TH primarily. In any event, I do make this point. Ms Fiddler did say that there was a failure to modify the behaviour plan, there was a failure to populate the risk assessment. She makes that observation in particular, that the risk assessment pro forma is unpopulated, she just simply wasn't provided one, or was one. She's very cautious, but she wasn't cross-examined about any of that. She wasn't challenged on any of it. How could she be? It's just true. My learned friend criticises me implicitly for not raising it in examination in chief. Well, I don't need to raise it in examination in chief, she simply says, "It's a breach not to prepare a risk assessment, it's a breach not to populate it, it's a breach not to prepare and update behavioural plans." There's nothing for me to say. It's a matter for the court thereafter, what implication that has on the employer's duty to the employee. So contrary to my learned friend, in my respectful submission, that was a matter for counsel for the defendant to cross-examine Ms Fiddler, not for me to seek to embellish what was already clear evidence. She does, in fact, during her cross-examination, this is at page one nine three of the supplemental bundle, at G. And we look at the behavioural policy, which, to put it mildly, is all over the place. And it does not even refer to the Equality Act 2010. So I'm not in my mind convinced that the school was aware what they needed to be doing. I can confirm that is still my opinion. And Mr Vaughan moves on. He doesn't ask any further supplemental questions about the behavioural policy. Now, it's right, and it's going to be said, I'm sure, by my learned friend, that she was asked about the incident on the twenty second of September, twenty twenty one, and the index incident on the third of November. Sorry, twenty fifteen.
Not twenty twenty one.
No, twenty twenty fifteen. And she says they're not linked, and that's on page one eight seven. At G.
Did she say anything about the failure to have the restorative justice?
I don't believe she did, my lord, no. I can check with that. I'll come back to that if I may, my lord. At G on page one eight seven. It's put to her, "So if you have a child that is acting out and is attacking someone for a reason that has been identified, this is because of the cousin friend issue, there is no reason to why you think he would then be involved in it, he would then involve himself in an unprovoked attack like he did on the third of November." And she says, "I don't see that the two cases are linked." And this is picked up by my friend. Just of observation, she says something slightly different on page one nine eight C.
Okay, one...
One nine eight C, my lord.
Thank you.
By this time, he had already been banging the door, he was really in a very agitated state. And whether, who can say? Who can say whether, who can say whether anything in his mind, TH's mind, anything had remained from the incident also with Mr Cunningham on the twenty second of September? We can't know these things. I can only give you my expert opinion based on my experience. Well, we can know these things because we can ask TH, because it's a school for children with behavioural and emotional problems. But nobody did ask him after the twenty second of September, there was no restorative justice meeting. I can see if there was anything put to Ms Fiddler. No, and the reason for that is, I think, because all of the witnesses said that the restorative justice meeting was with Christian Liptrot, which was wrong.
No, they said it was with the claimant.
Yes, I do beg your pardon, they said it was with the claimant, which was wrong, it was with Christian Liptrot. So I don't think it was dealt with in her initial report either.
So why, did she ever explain her comment at the bottom of one eight seven, between G and H, that she didn't see that they were linked?
No, she didn't, except she says something slightly different at page one nine eight.
One nine eight eight C, yeah, I've got that, yeah.
As I put in my supplemental skeleton argument, paragraph three, one five two of the core bundle, "In the event neither of the education experts dealt comprehensively with the multiple failures of the school to comply with their mechanisms of risk avoidance and management of poor behaviour. Mr Cox's report was confined to answering seven questions whose focus was exceptionally narrow, not aimed at the duty of care owed by the school to Mr Cunningham. Ms Fiddler commented in broad terms upon the school's failure properly to complete documentation, and she provided a useful summary of the statutory framework and relevant guidance." And then I go on to make the observation, it's not a professional opinional negligence case, where every standard of care had to be measured against the bone test. And the focus of the cross-examination of Ms Fiddler, in fact, was on mental health. And she did say, during her cross-examination, this is at page one five nine of the supplemental bundle, my lord.
Page...
One five nine, my lord.
Thank you.
And this has some relevance to causation, at G. "My question, is it your position that you're saying that TH should not have been a pupil at BLC on the third of November twenty fifteen? I'm saying that the school should have given more consideration to the run-up to the incident. There was no evidence on the file that the school had given sufficient consideration to the deteriorating mental health of TH." And then on the next page, it's A, my lord. "My position is that if adequate provision had been in place for him at BLC, then he could very well have done well at that school at that time. And I'm not in a position to say yea or nay whether he should have been there or should not. I'm just giving my expert opinion that the school did not do everything in its power to adequately provide for his increasingly fragile mental health at the school." And she emphasised that opinion one nine two to one nine three, my lord. She's asked, "Is it your opinion that TH has a disability within the meaning of the Quality Act 2010", at one nine two G, which she struggles to answer. But then at page one nine three B, she sets out, "Chapter six of the Statutory Special Educational Needs Disabilities Code of Practice that was in force. Schools should be alert as to how mental health problems can underpin behavioural issues in order to support pupils effectively, working with external support where needed." And she's also asked whether she considers that mental health behaviour in schools was complied with, page one nine nine. At D, "Do you consider that that guidance was complied with? I do not." And similarly at G, "No assessment for a clear analysis of his needs." None of that was disputed by the defendant. And she simply wasn't asked about the failure of the school to comply with their own policies. And dealing with, coming back to causation, in my submission, it's not for an education expert to specifically deal with causation in a case like this. Because that's a matter for the court.
All right, so, taking that as your starting point, how do you say the court ought to assess the question of causation? And where did the judge go wrong in the present case?
Well, he didn't specifically deal with causation as such at all. Except at paragraph forty four, to say it's not suggested that the claimant would have acted any differently had he been aware of any properly completed risk assessment. But I do say that in certain situations, and this is in the Vale case, the court can make an inference. The court has to be, in relation to causation issues such as this, pragmatic. We either have a health and safety expert come in for the claimant and defendant in cases like this to say, "Well, actually, if all of these steps had been done, then probably this incident would not have happened." Perhaps they have to have a joint report with an education consultant. What the Vale case demonstrates, of course, is that it's totally inappropriate to have an examination of the child concerned. So the court is in a difficult position. It's looking back at the actions of a child whose rationale was never fully understood at the time, precisely because we don't have the behavioural support policy, we don't have the risk assessment. So he hasn't filled in any of these parts.
Right, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I should have asked this question a moment or two ago, but... Am I right in understanding that when you said the judge didn't deal with causation, do I understand what you're getting at there is that in paragraph fifty five, he says he's not satisfied the defendant was in breach of its duty, and therefore, having found no breach, he didn't go on to say, "Well, if there was a breach, was it causative?"
My lord, yes, absolutely, yes. I think he merges the two slightly at paragraph forty four because he says it's not suggested that the claimant would have acted any different, which is a misunderstanding of the way the case was put. But it's quite correct that he did not specifically deal with causation separately as an issue because he did not find that there was any breach.
Well, at paragraph forty four, the last sentence appears to be a finding of breach. No risk assessments and no retention of them. Retention is obviously for the management.
It does. In my judgment, although the defendant can probably be criticised for failing to have... Well, he says that they can probably be criticised, but earlier he said that he considers that the dynamic risk assessment was sufficient. So the implication, and certainly this was Lord Justice Warby's understanding of this section, was that implicitly he was saying that the risk assessment, the dynamic risk assessment, was sufficient and suitable. So I think he's saying there that it wasn't a council of perfection, and therefore they can be criticised for not having and retaining those documents. That failure had no practical effect in the particular circumstances. I would read that, my lord, as saying that they had still complied with the requirement to risk assess through the Dynamic Risk Assessment. Because that's specific...
The way I read it, I read it as saying, "It's not a question of form over substance, although formally they didn't actually have the documents. In practical terms, they did what was necessary to manage the risk." That's as I read what he's saying.
My lady, yes, I respectfully agree, yes. That's essentially what it's saying, the failure had no practical effect in the particular circumstances of this case.
But that is saying, if you have a duty, which the school did, to produce a risk assessment under ninety-nine regulations, and they didn't, then they're in breach. It's just saying it made no difference because it's the detail, that's why I can't understand it not to be saying there's a breach.
Well, it doesn't sit very well with the...
No, no, I agree with paragraph fifty five. You're perfectly entitled to say it's internally inconsistent.
Well, it is, I think, internally inconsistent. And I don't criticise the judge for that. I presume he had a lot of other things to do, but it is... But if, to the extent that it is a finding that there was breach but causation was made out, not made out, then he doesn't go on to deal with causation in the way that he should have done, bearing in mind that he had heard quite detailed submissions about causation. Nor does he link it in with the Vale case, the sort of inferences that a court may draw. My lords and ladies, I have thought very carefully about the issue of causation in a case like this, and what is it that a claimant is supposed to do? And I respectfully agree with what my lady said earlier, that if a risk assessment is prepared, then that gives some indication of what the school should have been doing in this particular case.
Well, that would completely change all of health and safety litigation on its head. I mean, there are many cases where risk assessments are not prepared, and yet courts don't find breaches. I mean, your proposition would be far too wide.
No, I quite agree with that, it's got to be in the circumstances. It is difficult to know exactly what was being said in the Vale case. If I could just go to that.
Well, just before we get into the law, could I ask you a last question about the judgment on this? Because you pointed out that the judge in paragraph two identified three main strands to the argument. And I'm interested in the question of where he deals head-on with the second strand. Because in paragraph fifty seven, he's clearly... head-on with the second strand. Because in paragraph fifty-seven, he's clearly rejecting the first strand, and in paragraph fifty-eight, he's clearly rejecting the third strand. The nearest I can find at the moment to where he deals with the second strand is just one sentence in paragraph fifty-seven. In my judgment, the defendant discharged its duty to TH by seeking the support that he did, that it did, I'm sorry. That seems to be it. Am I right about that?
My lord, yes. And I think what he's saying there is that they were aware of TH's difficulties and deterioration in his behaviour, because he's linking that in to the findings that he has made at paragraph fourteen in relation to the dynamic risk assessment. Because the deterioration has been linked, in the judge's mind, with the dynamic risk assessment, I believe.
Well, it's also the point you make about the conflation of the duties, because the sentence that my lord has referred to focuses on the duty to TH, which you can well see would be the focus of attention if the case were put on the basis that by breaching the duty to the pupil, you broke the duty to the teacher.
Yes.
But that wasn't your case.
No.
Your case was, there was a separate breach of the duty to the teacher by failing to address the risks posed by the pupil and take mitigating steps in relation to those risks, because there wasn't a proper, specific risk assessment, as opposed to the rather amorphous dynamic risk assessment, which is basically, we'll look at every single pupil and see how they're behaving on the day. And that's not intended to be light-hearted, it's intended to be a general description. There's nothing wrong with saying, well, we'll keep an eye on each pupil and see whether there's something that's particularly bothering them on the day like today. But here is a pupil with a particular pattern of escalating and deteriorating behaviour, and although he's got a propensity, when he does get violent for smashing up property rather than hitting teachers, he's now got form for hitting one teacher and throwing a mug at another.
Right, yes. That's absolutely right. But he was, I understand why my learned friend who is in court, Mr Vaughan, put his case like that, but he is essentially, the judge is essentially characterising the second strand of the claimant's case as it was interpreted by the defendant, not by the claimant. Because the claimant had always been crystal clear. But in some senses, my lady, that's where the claimant says this case never needed expert evidence. It should always have been dealt with. I understand my lord's point, and I see the force of that, that in some senses, how are we... And especially in the circumstance where Miss Fiddler agreed with Mr Coggs, that he shouldn't have been excluded from the school. But it's a difficult one, that. But to what extent would one then confine the expert evidence only to the issue of exclusion, or to issues that are within the remit of the expert? But what the expert can't do is speak to the rest of the claimant's case. And I was always very keen that the expert evidence did not take over the whole of this case. And unfortunately, it appears that I failed in that endeavour, because the case was characterised as a duty, the second strand, to TH, which was not the way the case was put.
Yes, you're going to look at the Vale case?
My lord, yes. And in that case, of course, there is a child suffering from ASD. There is no examination of that child as to specifically what would have been done. And what Lord Justice Longmore states is, he cites Drake and Harbour, very different case on the facts, number of possible candidates of a cause in a fire occupied house, where a claimant proves both that a claimant was negligent and that loss ensued, which was of a kind likely to have resulted from such negligence. This would ordinarily be enough to enable a court to infer that it was probably so caused.
Which paragraph?
Thirty-two, my lord.
Thank you.
And Lord Justice Longmore observes, it may be difficult for Mrs Vale to show precisely what she or the school could have done to avoid the incident, if she'd been appropriately instructed in suitable techniques to be dealing with ASD children, but the probability is that if proper care had been taken over the relevant three periods, she would have not have met the injury she did. Now, Lord Justice Etherington puts his judgement in a slightly more conventional way. Paragraph thirty-nine on page one fifty, the following points arise out of the evidence of Mr Home and Mr Reed. First, contrary to the... Those are the two experts, who I believe are psychologists or child psychologists or something. First, contrary to the impression generated by what the judge said in paragraphs one twenty-one, there was expert evidence that if Havering had done what it should have done following the first assault, it was probable that the second attack would have been prevented. Secondly, the judge did not record that Mr Home disagreed with the evidence of Mr Reed to the effect that, to that effect. And so it is unclear what was the basis for the judge dismissing the substance of Mr Reed's evidence, that one way or another, if a proper assessment had been carried out and due consideration given after the first attack, one or more strategies could and should have been devised, which probably would have prevented the second attack. Thirdly, once it is accepted or established that Havering were negligent in failing to devise appropriate strategies for X, designed, doubtless among other things, to prevent further assaults of the kind that occurred on the second June, it's not obvious why the inability of the expert subsequently to assess X knew to establish which particular strategies would have worked best results in Mrs Vale's failure to show causation. A finding of negligence in the present case presupposes the steps that steps could and should have been taken precisely because they would have been likely to prevent the recurrence, or at least diminish the likelihood of an assault. So far as concerns causation, the issue is not which strategy would have worked best, but rather whether any strategy or combination of strategies would have been likely to avoid the second assault. The evidence of both experts is consistent with an affirmative answer to that question. So that's a slightly more conventional statement, although even there, Lord Justice Etherington seems to suggest that a finding of negligence presupposes the steps could and should have been taken precisely because they would have been likely to prevent the recurrence, or at least to diminish the likelihood of an assault. Now, clearly I can't come before the court and say that the court should always draw an inference in certain cases of this type. But it is very difficult when the actor, and by that I mean TH, lies outside the ambit of the court. We are in a situation, as in Vale, where we cannot have a psychological examination or behavioural examination of the actor, of the person who did it. We are in a situation where there is an almost total, the judge found there was a behavioural policy, but it wasn't updated and you didn't know what its contents were, almost total failure to document, for the sake of health and safety, we're not talking about team around the child or CAF and all of this, what was going on with the child and his propensity to cause violence. What we do have, I suppose, is references to shows grief through anger, capable of huge outbursts of aggression and so forth. And then we have the incident itself, and we have the previous incident. So the question, I suppose, is what in those circumstances, inferences, is the court entitled to draw to make a finding of causation?
Well, what you get out of Lord Justice Etherington's judgment, it seems to me, two things. One, he is pointing out the fact that the judge had overlooked positive evidence from an expert, which he had somehow decided to dismiss, or the substance of it, when there was no basis for doing so. So there was in fact an expert who said, if you'd done what you should have done, it's likely that there wouldn't have been another assault. So that was a case that's different from this. Well, we don't have that sort of quality of evidence. But focusing on what he says later in his judgment, he says, a finding of negligence in the present case presupposes that steps could and should have been taken. So if a proper assessment had been carried out, something would have been done, precisely because they would have been likely to prevent the recurrence, or at least to diminish the likelihood of an assault. So he's agreeing with Lord Justice Longmore-
He is.
-about the inference, and that he's saying that the whole reason you carry out an assessment of this kind in this type of scenario is because the risk assessment presupposes that once you've got to the root of what's causing the problem, you can devise a strategy, or more than one strategy, which will address that problem in such a way as to ameliorate the risk.
My lady, yes. Yes, he is. I thought it was entirely a more conventional approach, but it does have that second element, in fact. So he is agreeing-
He's agreeing with Lord Justice Longmore, and Sir David Keane agrees with both.
With both of them. So that was what I was praying in aid in this case. And it was the extent... I qualify it in this way. If there had only been a failure of restorative justice, for example, or only a failure to risk assess, or only a failure not to update the behavioural policy, or only a failure not to prepare an incident report after one, the incident on the twenty-second of December, or the incident on the fifth of November, then would it be fair for the court in those circumstances to say, we are going to draw an inference that causation was made out? But when you've got a claim where there's been a whole-scale failure to comply with the entire mechanism, sensible, carefully drafted dovetailing mechanism, then in that circumstance, then the claimant says, the appellant says, the court is entitled to draw that inference at that level of failure. Because what is the alternative? That we lead educational psychological evidence on a child that we cannot examine? We can't do that, because it would be just speculative. It would be usurping the court's function, because this is about the employer's duty to the employee. That doesn't require expert evidence as to breach. I suppose there is an argument that it could require expert evidence as to causation. If those steps had been pursued, then what would the child likely have done? But that isn't the whole question anyway, because you're talking about a dynamic situation with teachers, several teachers. So there's no clear answer to that. I suppose the point is, the key point is, that the claimant proves a breach of duty, which is directly focused at the loss that he suffers. And that is, I think, a key point. Because this is a violent and aggression policy, and then it is a risk assessment focused at violence and aggression. So one is directed to the other one, so to speak, and that is what happened. The claimant unfortunately sustained a significant injury, which ended his teaching career. So it is directly aimed at that loss. The whole thing, all of these documents that I've referred the court to are aimed at that loss.
So let me articulate that point in my own words, to see if I've understood what you're saying. If I've understood you correctly, what you're saying is that we have a failure of risk assessment, and specifically, a failure of risk assessment following the two incidents, almost twenty-second of September and the fifth of October, which demonstrated that here was a pupil showing violent and aggressive tendencies. If there had been proper risk assessment, inevitably follows that mitigating measures would have had to have been adopted.
My lord, yes.
And you say, in the absence of any mitigating measures having been adopted, then that's sufficient to tip the balance on your favour on causation?
My lord, yes. And the claimant has two bites of the cherry here, because we've got the twenty-second of September, which specifically involved the claimant, and of which there was a failure for a restorative justice meeting. No risk assessment, no updated behavioural support plan, no incident report, which has a section for TH to fill in and for it to be discussed. And then we've got another bite of the cherry, because we've got the fifth of October incident. All of the failures again, except a restorative justice meeting, perceived to be a success. So that's the only thing that was done.
Well, unless it could be so that the restorative justice meeting wiped the slate clean as it were in relation to everything that had gone before. But difficult to see how that happens when you're dealing with two different teachers.
My lady, yes. And it's specifically in the section in the behavioural policy, it specifically is about between the two individuals.
Yes.
It's about pragmatism, in my submission, at the end of the day. Pragmatism in particular circumstances as to causation. And the law, in my respective submission, is nothing less than pragmatic. And this is precisely the sort of case, as was Vale. Because I, as I've said to the court, this is something that I've thought about a great deal, about what is a claimant procedurally to do. And I don't know whether my learned friend's going to say, oh, well, we don't have the evidence. But what is a claimant to do in these sort of situations?
I can tell you what would help, and would certainly assist any judge in first instance, is if you plead, you didn't do this updated behaviour report, you didn't complete an incident report, you didn't have a restorative justice report.
My lord, yes.
It is to be inferred that if those steps had been taken, he wouldn't have attacked the claimant as he did. And then you've got a perfectly clear pleading of breach and causation, rather than a slight scattergun. I'm not saying impermissible, but-
No.
So that would certainly assist any poor judge in the future, and claimants in the future, whose cases might be inadvertently lost.
My lord, I accept that criticism entirely. The only defence I've got is the disclosure point.
I understand that.
But I respectfully entirely agree, my lord. One, my lady. May I just turn my-
Indeed.
Unless the court wishes to hear any further from me at the time, those are the extent of my submissions.
No, unless, my lord, no, we have no further questions. Thank you very much. And we do understand you rely upon what you have put in writing.
My lord, yes.
Yes, Mr Blengsley.
My lords, I and my lady, I anticipate being a similar amount of time perhaps to my learned friend. And it is I say, perhaps I should have indicated, or it should have been indicated outside, I am accompanied, as he's told, was my lady, by Mr Vaughan, who appeared below. Lords, my lady, we say that this appeal should fail because it was a factual decision, based on factual findings, which were accompanied by not complete or perfect evidence, but by plenty enough evidence to allow the judge to make the findings that he did, after what Lord Justice will be described as a meticulous review of the evidence. Despite ground E saying that this is a, that ground is based on- Despite Ground E saying that this is a, that ground is based on a misconstruing of the law by the learned judge, we say that in relation to foreseeability, we say that is a mischaracterisation, and that Ground E too is a factual ground. I've set out in my skeleton argument the well-known passage from the case that I think is, if you look on the side of the yoghurt pot, it should be pronounced "faye", rather than "fage" and "chobani", that the court should be extremely slow to interfere with factual findings. I don't think I need to go to that authority to read out those passages in any detail. What I'm going to submit is that this case was bookended by two significant difficulties for the claimant. That once the argument, which was developed at some length by Miss Fiddler in her written evidence, and to a certain extent in her oral evidence, were that TH should have been removed from the school before the 3rd of November. That away. That's bookend one. And once the learned judge had made the unchallenged finding that what happened on the day of the assault itself could not be criticised, that the management of TH had been appropriate, that he had been, in effect, properly dealt with. Once that's fallen away, that's bookend number two, then the judge was left, in essence, with the management of TH's deteriorating behaviour in between. And while the appeal bundle does not contain the entirety of the trial bundle, which went around well over a thousand pages, there were plenty of other documents in the trial bundle, such as Laura Coe's weekly bulletins, to which she's referred in her evidence, that went out to staff that assisted the judge in reaching the decision that he did. Of course, we make no bones, and we make no, we don't seek to go behind the criticism of the absence of a number of documents. It was difficult, as I think we'll have been seen from the papers, to work out precisely why how documents had disappeared.
It's extraordinary that the child's school file had disappeared.
Well, the, what was, the explanation that was positive for that, it was never bolted down, was that the school file had gone to TH's next school. And that's why it had been difficult to retrieve or find. It wasn't the subject of a specific disclosure application. Standard disclosure took place, and that wasn't challenged. It is particularly relevant, we say, that this was a very small school. The evidence, as it appeared from Laura Coe, was that TH was in a class of up to eight regular attendees, a class of five to 10 pupils, five to eight regular attendees, who were continually supervised by a teacher and a teaching assistant. So a ratio of four or five to one. Can I invite, my lords and my ladies, first of all, to look at the learned judge's reasons as to why he refused permission to appeal? It's in the core bundle at page 50. The grounds put to him were that the claimant seeks permission to appeal on basis that the judge's findings of fact justify, on the basis of statutory and regulatory guidance and the defendant's own documentary systems, a clear finding of breach of duty that was causative of injury. Further, the concept of dynamic risk assessment was a legal fiction, which there was no evidence prior to litigation. Accordingly, there was a wholesale failure to assess risk. Risk assess either TH or the risk of violence. The purpose of risk assessment not merely being to inform members of staff but to ameliorate behaviour. The learned judge says, "I refuse permission because I do not accept that there is a real prospect of the appeal court holding on to the fact that there was a breach of duty by the defendant. My finding was that the defendant acted reasonably in response to the deterioration in the pupil's behaviour."
Can I just ask on that, if you're going to rely on what the judge said below, and the finding of no breach of duty? I mean, there was a duty under the 99 regulations to produce a risk assessment. So I could well understand if he could say, "Well, I did find a breach of the regulations, which is a statutory duty, but it made no difference." But he actually says, "There was no breach of duty". I mean, how is that right?
My lord, I think we'd be driven to accept. I'm not going to spend very long on that.
Well, if you're driven to accept that that's legal nonsense, then it's not really your best point to take us to it.
Well, my lord, what I'm relying on, that passage four, is that the school acted reasonably in response to the deterioration in the pupil's behaviour. And that that's a factual, that's a factual point. And I fully accept that risk assessment is my worst point.
Well, can you help me on this? Because it goes to the same point. The judge goes on to say, "I disagree that a dynamic risk assessment is a legal fiction. It's a description of the defendant's case that pupil's behaviour has been constantly assessed by staff." Well, sorry, isn't that what all teachers do all the time in every school? How is that risk assessment at all?
Well, I'll take, my lord and my lady, to the passages where, for instance, Laura Coe deals with how that process worked, and indeed Valerie Bevington as well, a teaching assistant, and indeed what the claimant himself says about that. I think in light of, my lord, Lord Justice Dingham's, his point about the pleadings, I'm not going to spend very long on those, but I will just briefly go, if I may, to page 65 of the core bundle.
You will also have to deal with the fact that Mr. Valentine has taken us to various points of the evidence and transcripts, where it does look as if this case about, for example, no restorative justice meeting was put, and no objection was taken. And we are all well aware that sometimes pleadings don't, and if no one objects at the time, then the judge really should address the points.
My lord, yes, but, and we accept that the imperfections of the process, of course, both in terms of pleading and in terms of what is and is not challenged in cross-examination and in submissions. But this case was very clearly put in the pleadings, and in particular in relation to, in some respects, it's arguable, in respect of causation. And the particulars of negligence at paragraph 65, as my lord, Lord Justice Dingham has pointed out, there is not a pleading there, for instance, that restorative justice meetings or return-to-school interviews would have made all the difference. There are the two main allegations in relation to risk assessment. And the first is that, is paragraph, is it particular number 13 at page 67?
Well, there's 11 as well.
11 is failing adequately to respond or manage the increasingly aggressive behaviour. Perhaps that's a management point rather than a...
All right, but it's bound up, isn't it, with the failure to have a risk assessment? Because the way the case is put is, risk assessment enables you to work out what you need to do in order to manage its behaviour.
Yes, and I think the point that was made by Mr. Cox as well, I think he said that risk assessment was as an ancillary process to the behavioural support plan. And so the question of management and of assessment of the risk is all bound up together. And of course, that's right in terms of the pragmatic approach. That allegation 13, I'm tired of taking my lady's point, but allegation 13, failing to undertake any adequate risk assessments in relation to TH's behaviour and his risk to the teachers, including the claimant. That is, if you like, a combination of the duty in respect of risk assessing the consequences for TH himself and indeed the claimant. And then it specifically pleaded, "Had such a risk assessment been completed, then TH should have been permanently excluded subsequent to the previous serious incident when he jumped on the claimant's back."
I really don't understand why you say it's a combination. Isn't it a plain allegation of a failure to carry out a risk assessment in relation to his risk to the teachers?
Well, 13 is, I understood you to be, my lady, referring to 11.
Well, I referred to 11 as well, but you've just said that it was a combination of a failure to assess his risk from the point of view of the duty to the pupil, as well as a duty to the teachers. And I'm just saying, it looks to me as if it's a straightforward plea of a failure, a breach of duty in relation to the duty to the teachers. I can't see, I can't read that as meaning that they failed to undertake any of the duties to him personally.
Well, perhaps ultimately, that may not, well, there is a separate pleading over the page, of course, at paragraph 18.
Yeah.
Which is failing to undertake any adequate risk assessments in relation to the safety of the claimant in the workplace.
Yes, so one is specific to his behaviour and the risk that that poses, and the other is in relation to the general safety of the claimant in the workplace. But it's this point about the conflation of the two duties that is concerning me, as a result of what you've just submitted, which is that the pleading at paragraph 13 could be read as a breach of the duty to TH himself. And I'm afraid I disagree with that analysis.
Well, the judge characterised it as overlapping duties. I take my lady's point, but one can perhaps read it in more than one way. Failing to undertake any adequate risk assessment in relation to TH's behaviour and his risk to the teachers, including the claimant. We may be dancing on the head of a pin, but...
I think we are.
But what we are talking about here, of course, is risk arising from TH's behaviour generally. But what we, as has already been pointed out, what we don't have are the further specific pleadings arising from Miss Fiddler's evidence as it developed, and we will turn, if we may, to that in a moment.
Well, I take that point. But one's got to take into account, for example, sub-paragraph two of the particulars on page 65. Failing to have any or any sufficient regard to previous incidents involving TH. And a point is made of history of violence, there's the jumping on the back incident. No incident report completed, no investigation undertaken, claimant believes only sanction one week's exclusion. I think that turned out to be three and a half days. Exclusion wholly ineffective, regarded as a holiday by TH. So that would cover, would it not, the failure to have a restorative justice meeting? I appreciate there's nothing about causation.
Yes, yes, broadly it can be seen as covering that, in terms of failure to manage. Can I just pick up that point, if I may, on the exclusion being regarded as a holiday by TH? There was never any evidence of that. That was purely speculative, and we say somewhat gratuitous. And as we will see in a moment, the, the, the learned judge found as a fact that this was not an established pattern of violence against teachers, though he said it was probably developing. The reality is that the, in terms of how the school dealt with it, it was the material assault on the 3rd of November, which was the straw that broke the camel's back. The claimant's case is that the camel's back should have broken one or two assaults earlier.
No, I think the claimant's case with respect is that the one or two assaults earlier were sufficient to have alerted the school to have taken steps to avoid the straw breaking the camel's back on the third occasion.
My lady, yes, but the, we will see how the, how the school did in fact manage, and what was in fact done in the intervening period. And the respondent's case is that there was very much more to that than the rather dismissive picture that's been presented on it since the, in the appellant's case.
Before we come to the detail, can I ask the same question that my lord asked of Mr. Valentine? Where does the judge, in his judgment, address the second point of the three that he identified? I want to see whether or not there's agreement as to whether it's that one sentence in paragraph 57, or whether you say he dealt with it somewhere else.
The sentence is, "In my judgment, the defendant discharged its duty to TH by seeking the support that it did."
Yeah.
And then he said...
About, sorry, paragraph 47, is that?
57.
57, my lord, page 47, paragraph 57.
Thank you.
So you agree with Mr. Valentine, it's just that sentence?
I will, if I may, I will double-check that over the shorter judgment, but my, even if that is right, that sentence in fact carries a great deal of weight. Because where the learned judge says, "The duty was discharged by the school seeking the support that it did", that word "support" in fact carries a great deal of factual baggage in the level of support that was in fact sought from a number of agencies.
To be sure, and you've got factual findings in your favour to support that submission. But what about my lady's point? That in terms, that's about duty to TH, what about the duty to the claimant?
The, my lord, remember in my skeleton argument that, I pointed out that the question of training, for instance, of the claimant was never really a point of criticism. And it must be right that the duties overlap in practical terms. Because how will a duty to the claimant be executed? The obvious one is training. And as Mr. Valentine conceded in cross-examination, this is not about, this is not a team-teach case, he said. Team-teach being...
It's nothing to do with training, with respect. It's to do with the risk posed by the pupil to the teacher. And that involves addressing, in part, the difficulties that this young man was going through, what were causing the emotional disturbances, the mental health issues and so on. But also any particular trigger factors that might cause an outburst to be directed against this particular teacher, or other trigger factors which might not be related to this particular teacher, but might just simply relate to, I don't know, the time of day, or seeing the colour red, or being in a particular part of the building, or who knows?
Yes. Well, in respect of that, can I invite my lady and my lords to look at pages 18 and 19 of the supplemental bundle, where the claimant himself addresses this to some extent? This is the claimant's second witness statement. Before I take the court to the passages I'm particularly relying on, I should say that in relation to the first statement, if one reads that, it's self-standing document, and I'll explain why in a moment. The, it would, the impression given is that the claimant had very little knowledge of this pupil at all. Then the defendants, the respondents, witness statements are served, including in particular the statement... including in particular the statement of Laura Coe, at which point we say the, the claimant is driven to concede that he had a good deal of, of knowledge about TH. And this starts at paragraph 18 onwards. I'd not been involved in managing the behaviour of TH before. However, I was aware of him. Laura, that's Laura Coe would have been in charge of completing any incident forms and reviewing them.
I'm so terribly sorry, I'm obviously looking at the wrong document. You said paragraph 18.
Paragraph 18, page six of the supplemental bundle, my lady. Sorry, did I give the wrong reference?
Yes.
Apologies.
Thank you. Yes, I have that now, thank you.
I'd not been involved in managing the behaviour of TH before. However, I was aware of him. Laura would have been in charge of completing any incident forms and reviewing them. They should have been stored in a behaviour file with form tutor as well as copy held by the main office. Well, we, we accept that criticism, criticism. But he goes on to say, I note that TH had been involved, excluded on previous occasions. I, I had previously raised the issue of an earlier incident involving, sorry, I'm so sorry, this is, this is the first witness statement.
Yeah.
I beg your pardon, this is, and you will see the formulation that is used. In paragraph 19, I note that TH had been excluded from school on previous occasions. And that same formulation is, is used throughout, really, at paragraph 21, for instance. However, I've had sight of a communications log, which states it runs from October 12 to October 14. Over the page, at page 22, I believe that the incident on 22nd of September is the earlier incident I was talking about. I've not seen any investigation and was not asked to provide a witness statement. I note the pupil appears to have been excluded. And he says at paragraph 24, I've also had sight of further disclosure from the defendant regarding TH. Now, I don't, I don't make any criticism of the claimant about this. But when we come to the second statement, my apologies.
Would that be...
It's pages 18 and 19 of the same bundle. We see what the claimant did in fact know. And his, and his, yeah, his memory has been refreshed by Laura Coe's witness statement. Paragraphs four onwards, he's described above how Laura Coe has set out the, the issue of weekly bulletins and so on. And he says, I note that Laura Coe refers to the bulletins, refers to the bulletins mentioned, presumably, that's a typo. Mentioned that TH's father had died over the summer period with a warning being provided that grief was present itself, was presenting itself, as anger that should be. I was aware of the fact that TH's father had died over the summer. I note that Laura Coe comments that TH has moved to upper school, was put on hold following the September 15 incident. I was aware of this as TH would have moved to upper school and become my responsibility as it was due to the incident in September 15, which involved TH assaulting me. I was aware that the decision was made to hold him back in lower school. I wasn't involved in the decision-making process. Pausing there, you will recall that the, that Laura Coe and Valerie Bebington in their witness evidence describe how the, how when TH returned to school at the beginning of September, he was kept in the lower school because there would be familiar faces there. And that would make it easier for him to manage his grief, it was, it was felt.
He didn't like it, might he refer to it as baby school?
He just referred to it as baby school. He didn't like being kept apart from his friends. So he went, he was allowed to go up to lunch in the upper school with the condition that he behaved himself. And so there was a sanction hanging over him if he didn't behave himself. On the 22nd, of course, the assault happens and he never goes, in fact, to the upper school after that. In fact, there are only eight days in which he's back at school after the 22nd of September 15 assault. And that's part of the problem, that there is a rush. There is a lot to be compressed into eight days at school in, between the 22nd of September and the 3rd of November. TH doesn't come back to school after the, the three and a half day exclusion, which takes him to the end of the week. He stays off school for a further week after that. His first day back is the 5th of October, when there's the incident where he throws a mug at the wall and part of it hits Mr. Liptrot. After that, he is, there are, there are some days back at school. Mr. Liptrot asks for him not to be excluded. There is the restorative meeting. Half-term then intervenes, I think on the first day back from half-term, the 3rd of November incident occurs. So in all that time, there are only eight days for the school to take the actions that it is being criticised for not taking. And we say that must play a part in whether the school acted reasonably.
All right, is that a convenient moment?
Very good, we'll resume at five past ten.